Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of Hasslet's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 27, 2021, and the time is 6:30 PM. And we do have a forum present. Couple of items for the commissioners during the course of the meeting this evening. The meeting is being broadcast live and recorded. If you have an interest in speaking, please make sure that you press the microphone on button in front of you. Speak clearly into your microphone so that the audio can be picked up. And then when you're done speaking, if you would put yourself on mute, that'll release the cameras and then they'll turn to the next speaker. Couple items of community interest this evening. If any of the commissioners have an interest in attending Planning and Zoning workshops, there's an opportunity on August 19th and 20th to attend an NCT COG workshop. I guess that's taking place in Arlington. So I do have a couple of flyers here available for you to pick up if you have an interest in doing that. And then another item of interest, we do have several of our commissioners who are up for reappointment in September. Dennis, you're up for a reappointment?
If you're speaking, you're on mute.
I'm sorry? I'm not on mute.
Much better. Yep. Thank you.
Yep. So Dennis, you're up for reappointment in September. Jim, you're up for a reappointment in September. And Matt, you're up for a reappointment in September. If you would like to reply, you know, at this time, if you would like to reconsider reappointment, that'd be fine. If you want to hold your response until after the meeting, that would be appropriate as well. You want to, if anybody want to make, take a...
Yeah, I'd like to stay on the board, please.
This is Joe. Yeah, I would too.
This is Matt Hayes I would like also.
Okay, thank you. So you've recorded that, Ms. Rice? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, as we do, and we do have one of our commissioners and one of the alternatives, alternate commissioners has joined us by teleconference this evening as well. So moving on, Agenda Item 3A. It's a review of our regular meeting minutes from May 25, 2021. And then we also have for review 3B, which is our June 29, 2021 meeting minutes. Those minutes are properly reflected. And somebody would like to make a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion approval of the minutes as presented.
There's a motion for approval for 3A and 3B, meeting minutes from May and June.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor? That's unanimous? Okay, moving on, Agenda Item 4A. Hold a public hearing, discuss and consider a recommendation regarding a final plat of Sweetgrass subdivision Phase 1A being 30.7 acres located in the Eldridge-Hopkins abstract number 646 in the city of Hasslet, Texas. And we have, we'll begin with our staff presentation. Mr. Belcheff? We'll begin with our staff presentation for Agenda Item 4A.
here with Belcheff and Associates. We were asked to help process these developments for you. Sweetgrass Final Plat Phase 1A is in front of you now. This is Phase 1A. It's proposed to include 30 acres and 94 single-family lots with five open space lots and an amenity center lot. We reviewed the civil engineering plans for the development and included in your packet, I believe, is a review of the final plat and the civil engineering plan. If you would get to that, that essentially is summarized with a final plat analysis. And we're here actually for to answer any questions you may have. But it does go through in, in a great detail.
Page 15 of the packet.
In the letter, it includes a section on final plat analysis, final plat review comment. It lists our comment. I'm sure everybody read that before they got here. We've, and also comments on the final construction plans that start on about page four. As you can see, there's numerous comments and numerous deficiencies from our perspective as we reviewed these with respect to your subdivision ordinance, as well as a cursory review of the zoning PD for this development. And we did come up with a recommendation for you at the very back of the, of the letter, page eight. We do recommend that the final plat be denied based on the above information. And we're open for any questions you may have. And I believe the developer is probably here as well.
Okay. So before we move into giving the applicant a chance to speak, do you feel it's a good use of time to go through every single line item on this response letter that you provided and highlighting those, those observations that you made on this?
I personally don't think that's a good use of your time. There's a significant number of problems that have been documented in this letter. If, if you have any specific questions that we might address, feel free to do that. We'd be glad to address those or you can ask the applicant. But probably, and with your limited amount of time and the documentation that we provided you, that it's next to impossible to resolve a vast majority of these comments in a public session needs to be done and before it gets here. And I think at this point, it's in the city's best interest to follow your ordinance and deny the plat. Let them go away, rework their plans and the plat with the comments that we provided. We've done our best to give them enough information so that they know the direction they should be going. To try to save time and money for everybody and bring that back and let us look at it again. And at some point, bring that back to you for your reevaluation based on a new recommendation.
Thank you, sir. All right, the applicant is here this evening. Would you like to offer any comments at this time?
Good evening. Brett Pettigo with Terra Manor, 4416 West Lovers Lane in Dallas, Texas, 75209. And we just wanted to make sure we came and, you know, we received these comments. We submitted our construction plans back in early June. We received these comments Friday at about 3 o'clock. We reviewed all of those comments. And there are a lot of comments that have been given, given before you. I would like to say that we've reviewed every one of them. There is nothing on that that would substantiate a denial because the plan and the plat that's before you conforms exactly with the preliminary plat that was approved back in March or April, whenever it was approved by, by the city. So if you were to look at the line work and the, and the lots and everything, you would see that that plat conforms with that. We understand there's probably some construction plan comments and things that staff would like to work through. We have provided you tonight, we've submitted back to the city a answer to all of those comments that were given on both this plat and the, the 1C plat that you'll hear next. So we have, we have gone through every one of those comments. They can be addressed and happy to discuss any of those in detail if you'd like. But we have provided comments back and responses to each one of those comment line item. Again, by receiving it at 3 o'clock on Friday, it's very difficult for us to try to get those to you timely. And, you know, we apologize for that. But the plans have been here for almost two months and we just never received any comments. And I understand there's been some turnover and things like that that probably contributed to that. But just telling you the facts of where we are and what we've resubmitted. So happy to answer any questions. I do have representatives from our engineering. I would like to ask Misty just to come up. Misty is our legal counsel. She probably can also provide you with some, our position legally on where we are on this plat. And maybe that's beneficial.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Misty Ventura, Shoot Ventura, 9406 Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218 on behalf of the applicant. I would remind the commissioners of something that you know, which is that plat approval is not discretionary. It's quasi judicial. And if the plat meets state law and subdivision regulation requirements, you're duty bound to approve the plat. And to the extent that you elect not to approve a plat that's in compliance with your regulations and state law, you subject yourself to personal liability. With respect to the plat before you this evening, it complies with state law, all applicable subdivision regulations, and is consistent with the prior approved preliminary plat that this commission previously approved. We have provided a detailed response to Mr. Belcheff's concerns, and the applicant believes they can address those concerns even though as a legal matter, none of them produce the result that you have a basis to deny the plat. We would respectfully request that you approve the plat with the conditions noted in the letter that I provided on how we're going to respond. One detail I would like to highlight for the commissioners related to the plat is the request in Mr. Belcheff's letter that additional public infrastructure be provided at great expense. And I want to highlight that issue because infrastructure is very important, not only to the community, but to the developer. And that infrastructure was provided for. The adequacy of public facilities was first addressed when the preliminary plat was approved. And it was additionally addressed by council when they approved an engineer's report and levied assessments to fund infrastructure for this project. And last, but certainly not least, this community has a CIP, a capital improvement program that requires impact fees to be paid for the project. So the combination of the adequacy of the public facilities, the pit assessments levied on the property to fund infrastructure, and those fee obligations cover all the responsibility of this applicant and this development for public infrastructure. I'm available to answer any questions, but I would respectfully request that you approve this plat. And to the extent you believe that the plat needs to be denied, I would remind you that you would then have an obligation to provide the applicant certified reasons for denial that pinpoint cite the failure of the law that is the basis of the denial.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. And I got a number of comment cards here. So I'm just going to call on the individuals that I have cards for. If you did not fill out a card and you still have an interest in speaking, please, you know, at, at the end of the list that I, or the forms that I go through, you know, raise your hand, I'll call on you. When you come forward, please make sure that you state your name and your address so that we have that captured as well. So first speaker is Ms. McLeod. And I do have what you had submitted. I assume this is what you're going to be referring to?
Yes.
Okay. And if you do choose to come forward, please try to limit your, the amount of time you speak to around two minutes. That would be appropriate.
Okay. If I don't get through the entire letter, then you have it. And I do want it read into the record.
Okay.
Because this is putting the city and the developer on notice. Okay? And also, I don't appreciate the threats that they're making to the city council. They, they refer to it as a general warning, but it's mostly trying to intimidate you. Okay. I am writing regarding the final plat request for Sweetgrass subdivision Phase 1, Item 4A, and Phase 1C, Item 4C. I have reviewed the floodplain study, Sweetgrass-Brunbaugh tract, to see how this development would affect Hasslet Park, my property, and it may also be pertinent to Brentwood Estates and Maxwell Estates as when, as well as any other property on Buffalo Creek. First, if you haven't reviewed this report, you should. You would not be doing your due diligence before deciding on the plat, final plat, if you haven't. Second, if you haven't read it or don't understand it, you should deny or at least table the issue until the floodplain issue is understood and resolved. Third, the questions to be asked are not what will the effect be to Sweetgrass property, but what will the effect be to surrounding neighborhoods? I don't see these answers anywhere in the flood times, in the floodplain study. It may be time to widen and deepen Buffalo Creek. Pages two and three of the report from Kimley Horn states Buffalo Creek Tributary Number 2 is proposed to be filled between cross-section 15680 and 13385. You may find cross-sections on page seven and eight of their report. Tributary 2 is rerouted to the east and confluences with Buffalo Creek downstream of cross-section 16620. According to these maps, my property is between 15300 and 16058. So therefore, if it joins Buffalo Creek at 16620, that is just south of my property, which means a heavier flow of water if I understand the location of the base of the creek. Page four states increases in water surface elevations are observed between cross-sections 13460 and 16058. This includes Odessa Drive and the northern side of Shriver Drive, which is mine. Pages five and six state increases in velocity above, above pre-project are seen throughout the reach. Our conclusion is that most locations of increased velocity maintain a post-project velocity below six feet per second. In locations where the pre-project velocities are above six feet per second, the increases in velocity are below 5%. The exception is between cross-section 16588 and 17014 along Tributary, Tributary 2. Berry Drive falls within this cross-section. Unless you're an engineer or some sort of, there's a typo there. Forgot what the word was. But the, if some sort of engineer, the bulk of the report is graphs and connect the drop, dots drawing regarding depth. You know, the report is 88 pages, probably 70 of it is dot-to-dot graphs. Hasslet Park, like Brentwood and Maxwell, do not have, should say curbs, I apologize for the typo, curbs and gutters or sewers for the rainwater to go. We have drainage ditches. In Hasslet Park, when it rains hard or for long periods, our drainage ditches fill up and back up. Buffalo Creek is full, and it requires time and light or no rain to allow the rainwater to flow into Buffalo Creek. Sweetgrass, being a high-density subdivision with houses close together, in some cases 10 feet apart, there will obviously be curbs and gutters, and the water will be channeled out of the subdivision. The water will flow faster, velocity, into Buffalo Creek where it will be directed. There will not be natural drainage over the fields and prairies where it would be slower traveling. Therefore, Buffalo Creek would be fuller, faster, and the water flowing from the other sub, other divisions, subdivisions would back up longer and higher because there won't be room for this additional rainwater. This report only addresses possible flooding in Sweetgrass. It does not report on any effect it may have on neighboring neighborhoods. Therefore, the question again before you is not whether this plat should be approved. It should be denied until you understand the floodplain issue. You start building, you will flood us. You are hereby put on notice. The citizens will sue, the developer, the citizens will sue the city. You have been put on notice of possible floodplain issues. The report only addresses possible flooding. Buffalo Creek can hardly handle the water it currently has, but to add channeled unnatural drainage to the creek is an invitation for disaster. I have seen the water flow over my sidewalk. I have seen the water on occasion flow over my neighbor's driveway, and their driveway is at least three feet above the grass with a large drainage pipe. If this is occurring now, what will happen with water added from Sweetgrass subdivision? It must be remembered that I and many in this area are already in a floodplain. In 2011, FEMA changed it from a 500-year floodplain to a 100-year floodplain. Because of this designation, the city must proceed with extreme caution, the developer and the city must proceed with extreme caution not to exacerbate the situation. And I have provided pictures of my sidewalk and my neighbors. And I have literally seen it so deep and so backed up that it runs over their driveway. Think about that. So possible solution. I have not seen this anywhere in the report, but one possible solution, and maybe the only possible solution, is to widen and deepen Buffalo Creek. This lazy creek, little creek, created by nature, was not, was not created by nature to handle the runoff of the subdivisions. And I don't see anywhere in this report where this addresses the floodplain issue and what it's going to cause to the surrounding neighborhoods. You put more water into Buffalo Creek, it's not going to be able to, we're going to back up because there's nowhere for our water to go. You back us up, we have nothing. We're on drainage ditches, not curbs and gutters. So I therefore request that this council do its duty and deny it until you can find more information on how this is going to affect the neighboring neighborhoods and the flood issue. Thank you.
My name's Pat Ritchie. I live at 404 Blue Mound Road East. Live right next door to the Watercrest development that Terra Manor is doing. And I'm here tonight to talk about the developer and not necessarily talk about 4A and 4B because I'm really not affected by it, other than the traffic on Blue Mound, which they're going to handle by, you know, doing what they need to do. The 4B, I mean, the, the developer here, over all the years that I've been in this city, which is over 20 now, and the years I spent in public service and on this board, I've never worked with a developer like this guy. He is there for the citizens of this city. He wants to do things the right way. He comes to my house and says, Pat, what can we do for this fencing to make you happy? What can, you know, how many developers would come and talk to a citizen in the city to make sure that he's doing the right thing? You know, we work it out. And, and whatever I really wanted, he says, we can do that for you. You know, we'll get that, we'll make that happen. So when you, when you look at subdivisions in the city, and you go look at, at Caraway and, and Watercrest and the vines, look, look at the money this developer is putting into our city to make good development. All right? Nobody else has ever done that. Nobody's ever even volunteered to try to do it. Okay? So this is the type developer you want in your city. You don't want to run him off and make him mad because the next guy coming in could be one of those that just want to do bar ditches and, you know, open ditches and half-acre lots and stuff that, that don't make the city any money, that bring things down instead of raise them up. So that's, that's my comment to you is that you've got a really good developer in this city right now. You can talk to anybody on the staff, the old staff. You know, things have changed. The last election said that people want to go back to a lot of the ways things were. And that's fine. If that's what the city of Hasslet needs to do. But you don't do that in the middle of a project. All right? We, we owe this man, you know, he went and spent money based on his preliminary plat and got, got, got in debt over his preliminary plat. And now, you know, he's got an eight-page denial? Come on. You know, if you want to, if you want to start that trend of going back to what things were in the old days, start on the next one. But don't, don't do that in the middle of a, in the middle of a project. That's just not right. Thank you.
Thank you for comments, Mr. Ritchie. Is anyone else like to speak for or against? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Hillborn. I live at 2207 Virginia Lane. I'm resident of Hasslet for 35 years. I'm speaking to you tonight to tell you that I would ask you to approve this final plat based on the fact that we've already approved the preliminary plat. It's the same plat. We have a planned development. We have different agreements that are attached to this. And it's time to go forward if the developer has requested. However, if, like me, some of you wonder, has a developer had an opportunity to really look through this, this report that he received, that y'all have had a very couple of days to review? You'll notice there are several notations in this eight-page document that refers to other documents that y'all haven't seen. So, you know, if you decided you wanted to perhaps have a little bit more time, then let me just ask you to consider that you could continue this item to a date certain so that the, the date that you're going to actually act on it is known. And that is with the developer's agreement, of course, because he would have to be willing to participate in some kind of a continuance. Because right now, we're under a deadline to take action as a city. But if you did that, then you would possibly allow the developer and the interim engineer some time to answer some of the questions. In, in my reading of the eight-page report, I, I saw things that I know have been done and are available and apparently maybe not available to him. So at least consider that. But I'm urging you not to just flatly deny this because it is conforms to what we already approved. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against? We'll go, ma'am, we'll go with you first?
My name is Sandra Radford. I live at 637 Blue Mound Road E, which is adjacent to Sweetgrass. I'm bringing up the water runoff issue. We want to make sure our pond does not take on any more water, any less water than it is now. Also, there is the gas road that is right now running right along our property line. Would like to see if there's maybe some other options that could negate that from affecting our, our property. Also, I noticed Mr. Ritchie was saying how good it was to work with the developer. My husband and I had set up a meeting to go to his office to discuss some of our concerns. He showed up a meeting, an hour late for the meeting as it was ending. And his partner's response on one of the questions, excuse me, that we had was, have y'all thought about moving? Which didn't set too right with me. Also, we've had a driveway issue in Blue Mound Road E was improved, and it took an intervention from a city council member to get these guys out here and get it done properly. We had them out there three times, and they were just patchworking or just kind of throwing something to see if it would stick. So I would like to see him be a little more responsive to our concerns and not just patchwork things. Try to be a good neighbor and at least leave everybody whole the way they were so we are not having to deal with water. We're not having to deal with dust. We had an issue on more than one occasions where work being done across the street was causing tons of dust to come out. And there was no response. One of the neighbors ended up having to call the Texas Quality Control to get it under control. That's not something we should have to do. We called Mr. Pettigo one time, and his partner had answered, and his response was, well, it's Sunday. I'm not sure I'll be able to get anyone there. Something like that needs to be, we're, we're living there 24/7. When they have work done, there should be somebody on call or somebody, if there is issues that need to be dealt with, they can be dealt with in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Halsey?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, Gary Halsey, 2003, F M 156, South Hasslet, Texas, 76052. I wanted to, hearing your subdivision ordinance, one, I heard the applicant's attorney tell you about personal liability. But here you have very specific choices. This is your subdivision ordinance, Section 2.15, 2.15 Final Plat. Says no plat shall be approved as a final plat until... be approved as a final plat until, and I won't read all of them, but number three states, all preliminary and final engineering plans shall have been approved by the effective city departments and city engineer. It's pretty straightforward. The other is that I'd like to mention to Mr. Pat Ritchie, the comment that going back, this is just a factual review of plans, has nothing to do with anything about going back. Thank you. I have the floor. I have the floor, Mr. Ritchie. And anyway, I, I, I just mentioned to Mr. Ritchie that I had the floor. The comment that this had nothing to do about going back, is just a factual review of plans according to, to, according to your subdivision ordinance, all it is. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Hey, recognizing that no one came forward to speak, we'll close the public hearing and we will open it up for discussion. So we can take questions for the city staff, our engineers, or the applicant at this time, if you have any.
Yeah, this Paul Wallach, I have a question of Mr. Belcher.
Yes, sir.
I assume the drainage study, according to Mr. McCloud's letter, she said you, she reviewed the floodplain study, I'm assuming that's a drainage study, that Kimley Horn prepared that, do you know?
Well, there's two, there's two studies. One is a floodplain study, which was prepared by Kimley Horn to verify that they could make modifications to a floodplain and a floodway. Based on that study, they could make, do certain grading changes or certain grading configurations in their plan. Inside their plans is a drainage study, which deals more, on a more local basis for the subdivision itself, or other adjacent runoff that may, may affect their development. So you have to take both of those together and be able to develop a set of constructions, or final engineering plans, be able to deal with drainage. I, I can't address the specific comments that she made here, but we did discover that there are some disconnections or discontinuities between the flood study and the grading plan in the plans themselves. One specific example for the entire development is that some of the waters appears to be developed, be diverted onto an adjacent property, which needs to be dealt with, that's just part of normal engineering design that they, that they go through. There's some gas well roads that are being rerouted through floodplains and through floodways that may or may not create problems, but those don't, but don't appear that they've been evaluated sufficiently for us to understand. So we, we had a very short window, we, we can only review what we've got in front of us. We did get final construction plans delivered directly to our office from their engineer, and we went through them as best we can and came up with this list of issues, both with the plat and the final engineering plans, which of course, your ordinance requires that those plans be approved before you approve a plat. So there's two issues. One is those aren't approved, based on what we found, we can't approve those or recommend approval, acceptance of those. The second is the final plat itself, there are numerous issues with the final plat that need to be addressed. You don't have, can't debate with legal issues or legal concerns, but you really don't have much of a choice, you either have to turn one down or approve it during a, during a specific window, that's what you're, that's what the law now, we have to apply, how it affects the plat. In the past, we, we were down to two or three conditions that could be developed, that could be resolved without costing time or money to different, to the city or to the developer. We would come in front of you and recommend approval with the condition that that option isn't really available to you now, and it's definitely not available in this, in this, with this particular application. So we have to stand by the written recommendations you're giving. I hope that answered your drainage question, because I probably was a little worried.
Here's Buffalo, Buffalo Creek, is abicable water. The Corps of Engineers involved in this project at all approval? Do they require Corps of Engineers approval?
Not that I'm aware of. The flood study, in this particular case for Buffalo Creek, is processed through FEMA, or it's a review and approval. I don't, I don't know if they actually deal with Corps of Engineers now, they would have to, they would have to obtain a, or a section 404 water permit to be able to deal with realigning the creek themselves, that's not in your ordinance, and all we really do is try to look and see if they've done what they're supposed to do. We don't have a way to enforce that between them and the federal government. But yes, that, that probably is something that will have to be done.
But wouldn't, wouldn't the city require that permit to be issued, that 404 nationwide permit issued before approving any plan?
We don't really have a mechanism to require it, but we do usually ask for it, just to get some assurance that the city's not really a part of that application.
So George, I don't, I don't want to turn this into a workshop where we go through every single one of these lines, get your perspective, get the applicant's perspective and try to resolve that, there's no way we can do that. But there's, there's a couple of things I would like to understand. So a, a, a final plat that's complete, so you started out, there's like six things right here on, on page 15 that makes me wonder, is it complete? And that's, for me, having complete information for you to review and complete information for us to consider is very important. You know, we have a, we have a preliminary plat that's been approved, and you know, it reflects what we're going to, what we're doing here. But the final plat requires a number of things to be included, and it doesn't appear these things were included. So let's just look at number two, plat should clearly delineate maintenance responsibilities of detention. Is that, is that shown?
No, it's not.
These are kind of yes or no.
No.
Okay. And these are requirements by ordinances, right?
Yes.
Plat should identify all contiguous property owners to the addition, is that shown on the final plat?
It is not.
Should define the limits of the 30-foot ingress and egress for, for any easements that are abandoned?
Uh, yes, that should be shown, you have to clearly show things on the plat. If there's some question, then obviously the plat can't be considered or recommended to prove.
Okay. Number six, plat should clearly identify building line setback.
Yes, your ordinance requires.
And they're not currently shown?
They're, they're not. We didn't do an in-depth evaluation of your zoning ordinance, but based on what we read in your, in the cursory review of that ordinance, they're not shown on the plat.
Alright, and, and there's, you know, a number of other items I could ask you, and I don't want to go through the entire list, but, so there are things that are required on the final plat that we don't have properly reflected here, is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
And that's not a determination that this is not compliant with the preliminary plat, it's just things that are required on the final plat in order for it to be complete, right?
Correct, and you could, you could go on to number seven, is a good example of why you require a final engineering plan to support a final plat. Those final plans are helping you determine, or helping the development determine spacing and where water and sewer lines are going. So if you're placing water and sewer lines together, or in near vicinity and you've got certain depths, well, you have to have enough easement to be able to deal with those water and sewer lines. In this particular case, we've, we've stated that the plat should show 25 feet on a utility easement and, instead of 20 feet, due to being able to access a water and/or a sewer line. And so that's an important thing that you're not going to find that specifically under plat requirements, other than the plat has to, the plat has to support the construction plan. Construction plans say you need this, based on good engineering practice, as well as standards within your, your, your subdivision ordinance, then you need this particular easement. Well, that easement isn't shown at 25 feet. Now, if we had sufficient time before the 30-day rule came into effect, our past practice probably would have been, let's give that to the, to the engineer and the developer, let's let them evaluate that, they probably would have, would have fixed, brought it to that level, but we don't have, you don't have that time anymore, it's been dictated that you have to act. Normally, yes, we would have been able to go to a developer and say, look, we've got some issues that need to be dealt with. We would have tried to deal with it in the preliminary plat, but may or may not had enough information at that level to, to accomplish that until you got to the final engineering. But yeah, we, our past practice would have been, let's try to get all this resolved so that we could bring you a plat that, that is correct.
Um, maybe just a couple of other ones I saw here. So the flood study, I think we've heard some public comments about that, but the, the flood study and where the, the gas well access road, so where the runoff in that area, is there any understanding of where that water's going or what it's going to affect?
Well, not when you come back and you build a road across it, you don't really know what the, what the water's going to do, or how that water's going to affect the road, and that road serves two purposes, there may be some private, there's a private agreement as to how that road accesses a gas well. We don't necessarily get into that, that's between a property owner or mineral rights owner and the, and the operator, but the fire department provides service for those gas wells, so we do everything we can to make sure that rerouting is not going to affect drainage, number one, and it's also going to provide adequate emergency service.
And there's nothing there to help you understand where that water's going or how it's going to be controlled?
No, not enough information, there's no design on the roadway itself.
Okay. The traffic impact analysis, the TIA, says it's still currently under review, so that, and that the applicant is waiting for feedback on that?
We didn't have a chance to get into the detail of the traffic impact analysis, but on the surface, it doesn't look like it's consistent with what's being proposed with these two phases. And we didn't really see anything in there that, that broke down how these roadways would be developed based on the phase. So there's some important issues that need to be dealt with, we haven't gotten enough, or been able to get through it enough to be able to help resolve.
Okay. And in these simple engineering drawings that you guys used for this review, they, they were submitted as part of the final plat, is that correct, not part of the preliminary plat?
The final engineering drawings?
Yeah, the final engineering drawings.
Yes, they were.
So i- is there anything else significant that you would, you know, you would just say, hey, yeah, I would like to draw your attention to this item or that item, that would, you would say is, demonstrates that the final plat is incomplete, or that we need to resolve something in order for it to be considered for approval? I mean, I, you've got a whole list of here, here, but are there any specific ones that you would like to draw our attention to?
I could ask Mike Anderson to come up and see, give you two or three, we'll have to limit him on his, he's a very detailed person, but maybe he can give you two or three additional comments that he thinks are most, otherwise we just have to read through them and, and give you my opinion, but in reality, they're a slew of comments.
I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but I want to, yeah, I want to make a most, the most informed decision, and the appropriate decision when we get to a point of considering a motion here. I think that's very important for us, for myself and the other commissioners, that we're well informed of the, where the most concern sits within what you gave the applicant feedback on. So, Mr. Anderson, do you have any comments that you, you could share with us or a perspective?
Sure. So Mike Anderson, Belcher Associates, I work for George, I did have a hand in delving into these construction plans, they were provided to us about two weeks ago. So, you know, I know they've been working for a long time and have the benefit of understanding the project and being with it, except I just want to let you all know, we were given this information two weeks ago. We had basically three full-size sets of construction plans, plus a flood study, plus a TIA, and then we were, had to go back and find out what was approved during the preliminary plat process to fully understand what was agreed upon and, and approved during that process, pile that back into what's in front of us and what's to be acted on before you this evening. So I think one of the, one of the big things from our perspective in reviewing this is the, is the sewer capacity issue, both with the, with the rerouted onsite portion of the, of the sewer that went in for the developments on the south side of the road, as well as the downstream sewer. You know, the city had a master plan that was commissioned for an impact fee study update back in March, and they stated numerous capacity issues with Buffalo Creek line as it approached Harmel and Road further to the north relating to overflows, INI issues and like. So, you know, under our general, general construction plan comments, you know, you heard the applicant speak to the, to the gravity of the costs you see before you, it's $2.6 million. So our, our, our job here under the ordinance is to, is to point out, based on your rules, the impacts associated with this development. We're not saying in there right there that they need to go pay $2.6 million to the sewer line. Our job is to review what's provided, review that against your ordinance and determine what's roughly proportional to the development. So if you skip to the back of our letter, under the rough proportionality determination section, it's, it's indeterminate, because at this point, there's not enough information that's been provided in the plans, and there's, we suspect that there will be some revisions and resubmittals by the applicant that will help us recommend a proportionate share of offsetting their impact, whatever those may be, roadways, water, sewer. And so, again, our job is to point out what your rules say, is to look at the impact of this development as it relates to adjacent properties, as well as the city as a whole. So from my perspective, that would be a pretty, that would be a pretty big one under the general comments. The other, the issues with the rerouted gas well roads as they cross the floodplain and the lack of information, corroborating information between what's provided or what's proposed in the grading versus what was analyzed through the downstream assessment and floodplain analysis provided by the applicant, you know, there's, we just don't feel comfortable. Again, that's a big document, we haven't fully had the time to get into that because we're focused on the final plat and construction plan. Again, all this kind of has to come together and, and, and the end result is, is put down on paper here, and that's what's get, gets built in the field. So I think those would be the two, two major issues for this phase. I'd like to speak on the next phase when, when we have the opportunity for that one, and there's a couple other items in there that I could speak to, but from my perspective, those are some big picture items. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me or comments?
I have a general question, being that you had such a short time to review all this?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think there'll be more things that you find?
Well, I just put a little comment, you see the comment on page eight up at the top, additional information provided by the applicant may result in additional comments, right? You go in and you figure out, okay, we can't, we can't put this road here because it affects this, well, that changes the design on their side, so that may generate additional comment. They're proposing to put a water line 33 feet deep in the ground, and then they come back and say, well, we'll put it four feet deep, well, that may not be deep enough for that 12-inch water line, provide adequate cover on that facility. So again, you know, the information is provided back to them, they go away and, and deal with it, new set of drawings is developed and, and we, and we walk through it again. So, yes, ma'am, we anticipate that once we get through the TIA and the floodplain study, there's going to be some additional comments as well, so we were pressed, pressed for time to get something before you, did the best we could, and we anticipate that there'll probably be several, several rounds of back and forth before this is fleshed out. This is a pretty large development, you know, there's some impact here, so in our, our best interest and everybody's best interest that we go through, make sure everybody, everybody's taken care of.
I don't know if you, you can answer this, maybe Mr. Rogers can, but a 30-foot deep water line, that's pretty deep, isn't it?
Yes, we recommend.
Do we have equipment to maintain something that deep? So is 30 feet right? I, I see you shaking your head, Mr. Pettigo, is 30 feet not right?
10-inch gas line on top of that too, so you'd have to figure out how to support that during any future maintenance or removal of that facility. We just didn't think that was appropriate.
That, that's in their construction plan?
Yes. Yes.
30 feet deep.
Okay, so I, I have, maybe my question is to you, Mr. Belchev. So come forward. So th- this is a final plat and we have, we have a certain amount of time that we need to respond to this final plat application. And I want to be fair to the applicant, but I also want to be thorough in our review and our determination of what we need as a city in order to move something forward. So our options are, I, I think one of three. We can either continue it, table it, or deny it, or approve it. I guess there's fourth, or, or approve it as it, as it is. If we were to table it or continue it, we would need the applicant to agree to that and waive the, the action period requirement on, by the city, is that correct? In order to resolve these things and give us a complete response to this, is that correct?
I'm not an attorney and I, and I don't know for sure, but my understanding is that you really don't have that choice anymore. Say there's some dilemmas with, with the applicant waiving their 30-day right that probably don't want to get into. You know, if you had your attorney here, he might give you a better question, better answer to that. From my perspective, our, our job is to try to do our best to apply the law, not interpret. So we don't like getting into gray areas. Or we, we wouldn't suggest it table or, or try to extend it in any manner.
Okay.
If it's denied, they can not, they can go back, deal with it, look at it again. I don't think there's going to be a big time difference doing it either way.
Okay. Um, so I, I'll ask you a question, Mr. Pedego. And, and I, I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish here. And, you know, you've got a lot of work to do to get this thing, you know, submitted the first time, let alone, you know, respond to a bunch of questions. But are you working under any time schedule that this has to be responded to, to help you achieve a specific target?
You know, that's a, I mean, there, there's always a time schedule because whenever we have a preliminary plat that's approved and we purchase land based on that preliminary plat. There's lenders, there's financial investors, all of those that put covenants on us to perform and develop the property based on a schedule that would be a normal working schedule. So yes, there is pressure because we have financial responsibilities and covenants based on the approvals of those preliminary plat. So yes, that's why there is pressure for us to move forward. And when we submit typically, we get these comments back within a 30-day period. We make those adjustments. Before it ever gets to you, you've seen that iteration process. Not, you know, we, we, we try to be sympathetic. We always work with the city. But, you know, we've followed up and asked when we're going to get comments. And it's kind of been just not a lot of dialogue back when we're going to get them. And then we surprise get comments on a Friday before a meeting. I mean, just like y'all get them and you're, I, I've heard, I've been in front of you so much that I've heard, we just got these, this packet and I don't understand what's in it. And I mean, that's kind of how we feel here. So, but I, I mean, I just want to make sure you understand too. Mr. Belchev said it in a, in one way that the comment, like for example, the 20 to 25 foot easement. We've developed many lots in Hazlet, Texas, whenever we have dual utilities running between those. And we've put a 20-foot easement on the plat. The preliminary plat actually showed a 15-foot easement in that particular area. It showed both of those lines going down there and a 15-foot easement. So, I mean, we didn't just make this up and say, hey, let's just go with a narrower 20-foot easement. We, we did it because that's what has been required of us in the past. When we prepare plans, we prepare plans based on what the subdivision ordinances do or do not say. And as Mr. Belchev says, that particular item isn't written down in the subdivision order. That's for the reviewer's discretion. So we get comments and there's a lot of these comments that are just discretionary comments that he would like to see it a certain way. Now, we can, we can accommodate the 25-foot easement, but somebody's got to tell us, hey, we're changing that, that, you know, and, and we're going to do it a different way.
So how, how do you respond to the ones that aren't discretionary, though? Things that are just required to have in our final plat document?
I, I would say those are easily, if you told me tonight, those discretionary items, you want to see that on the plat before it's approved by council. We would make those changes and get those back and you could approve this subject to those changes. That's what's typically been done. Because these comments, sometimes there's always changes that happen on final plat after you guys have approved them. Because a franchise utility company may come back and say, hey, we, we want to change our design and we need to reroute this easement between these two lots. And that plat gets changed because that is kind of administrative. It's not changing the lot configuration. It's not changing anything there. And by the time the plat gets filed, those changes are made, staff approves that and it gets filed of record. So there's, I'm just saying, this is a, a process that we typically have gone through in Hazlet where we work together and we, we try to find a resolution and solve all the problems. There's obviously some, some items that we would say, yeah, let's just, we'll make those changes. We're happy to make those changes. In my, in my letter that I provided to you tonight in response to all those, I said, I'm, I'm willing to make the change. This is not an adversarial deal for us. We've, we've got a great relationship with Hazlet. We've always done that. So, but some of the items that have been brought up are just, I mean, you know, I would add, I mean, just a quick comment back on the preliminary plat. There wasn't enough evidence of the off-site sewer line Mr. Belchev said at the time the preliminary plat was approved. Just want to make sure the preliminary plat showed 500 lots, plus or minus on that? 494, okay. And that showed one point of entry into Buffalo Creek. Okay, so I don't know what, what different we would show you at the preliminary plat that all of those flows were going into the Buffalo Creek intercept. So that's something that there's not details at the engineering level that says it would, at that point, somebody would raise their hand and say, hey, y'all need to go study the Buffalo Creek interceptor because we may want you to do some improvements on. That's the preliminary plat process. This is the final plat process. We followed exactly what was shown on the preliminary plat with the way our utilities and everything were laid out. So it, it's just, there's, this is a process that we typically don't get to the point where somebody's saying, we got to either approve it or deny it. It's usually a body like you saying, hey, we see these comments, please make sure these comments are addressed and go to council. Or if you don't feel comfortable with that, you can deny it. I mean, it's your, it's your choice.
Yeah. Well, you know, this, this body has been very willing to come back for special sessions to help keep things moving forward. And if, you know, I'm not sure what motion will or won't be made tonight, but if, if we, there is an approval tonight and we need to come back together, then I'll work with the commissioners to find a time that's appropriate based on the city's, that engineer's opportunity to review, your ability to respond to all of the comments. So I, I don't know which direction things are going to go tonight, but I just wanted to let you know that we're here to work with you and try to, try to help you accomplish the things that you're wanting to accomplish.
If we get comments in good faith and we're, everybody's trying to move the project forward and get through an approval instead of trying to find ways to discourage the development, that's all we want. That's, I mean, because we, we have investment in this property based on the approvals that were given. And we just want to go execute on those approvals that were given and just follow the plan. And I understand there's been some changes and, and that's gone on politically within Hazlet. And I understand that. I get that. I'm not going to be bringing before you another development plan because I understand the sentiment has changed. But whenever we have an approval and we're coming in to develop that prop- property based on those approvals, we just expect for everybody to honor what they said and not try to go back. That's all, that's all we act. That's, I mean, that's it.
Yeah. And I, and I think it's fair to, to say that the city has a final plat process that, and requirements as part of that final plat that we is, that we need to help ensure is done properly as well. So, yeah, it needs to be, you know, both parties need to understand there's responsibilities there.
Unfortunately, I think the laws have changed a little bit and that kind of pushes, pushes this. And with, with the things that have happened within Hazlet over the last 60 to 90 days, I think that is, is what's kind of, I'm not, I'm not necessarily faulting because they had a short amount of time to review this. I'm just saying that we are where we are. We just now have to figure out how to move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
While I've consumed quite a bit of time here, does anybody have any other questions they want to ask, or either the applicant or the city staff?
I, I have one. All these comments that you've gotten from engine, just to be clear, are there any issues here that were presented to you that you don't think you can resolve?
I think we can resolve every one of them. No, I mean, I, let me, that's a good clarification. I mean, we're not, because if you were to look at the impact of our development on that line, that's why you have impact fees. Because we pay our impact fees and those dollars get used for CIP projects. We're not going to be able to write a check. And I don't, I don't think the comments said that. They kind of alluded to that a little bit.
I think it said they didn't, weren't able to determine the rough proportionality. Not that the cost of 2. whatever million was to be borne by you. It was more, we need to determine what, what of that amount, if any, is applicable as rough proportionality.
And but what I was saying, Misty and to you is, we typically, whenever there's issues within the city, we sit down, we work through them and we find a solution that's good for the city and good for us as a developer that works. So there's been instances before where a sewer line needed to be built. We built it for the city. City owes us $585,000 because we built that, but it only comes whenever those impact fees get collected. So I'm not saying we're going to do that on a $2.7 million project because it's, it far exceeds the requirement of what we have here. But I'm just saying, we've always sat down, whenever Hazlet Parkway is, there's right of way that needs to be given. We, we give right of way. We've wrote checks. We've done things to help the city whenever there's infrastructure that they need built. I'm just saying we've worked through it. That's just what, that's our, been our relationship and we would like to continue that. But when we get comments on a Friday at 3 o'clock before a meeting and, and a lot of the comments feel like it's kind of being created to make it look like we didn't do our job well, I, I don't, I don't like that. I mean, I, because I think we do our job well. Can I say one more thing too? I have apologized to Mrs. Rapp before. And I, I mean, I, she's mentioned this meeting that I missed. I had a car, car problem. My car didn't start. My partner and I both were going to be at the meeting. We're one and the other. And I just, I, I just want to say, I, I told you I apologized for that, but I was late to the meeting and my partner covered it. I had a car trouble. That was it. So I'm, I apologize again for being late to that meeting.
Yeah, are there any other questions for the city staff or the applicant?
Earlier, Ms. Ventura, is that correct? You addressed or said that the infrastructure was addressed on the preliminary plat. Why was it left off the flat, final plat?
I don't believe the infrastructure was left off the final plat. The final plat was filed with construction drawings that contemplate the infrastructure that goes with that final plat. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
When does the, um, the period of time to act on this expire? Do we know the answer to that?
We have 30 days.
And do, do we know the?
So I, I believe there's, there's a couple of opinions floating around here. Misty can probably. But the process and why this is a little bit of a shock to us, is we submitted our application back and all the construction plans back June 7. The city process is to have staff review all of that and determine that it's complete and, and ready for you to see. Because they've reviewed those plans, they've reviewed that plat and it's a completeness letter saying, the shot clock can now start because we have everything we need for you, all the information you need to make a decision. So that was granted back with previous staff. I think that date may have been around early July. I, I don't have that, but it's not necessarily when the plat was filed. It's whenever staff determines that that plat satisfies all the requirements and has the information for you to make the decision. If I'm wrong on that, Misty, can you, is that right?
And does it, do you have any indication of when the city replied to you and said the application is complete? Yeah, I'm trying to determine how much time, if any, we have to still, to, yeah, to.
It's a good, good question. We're past that day because the application filed on June 7.
Okay, so I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask another question so to make sure I understand how the, the resolution of the things that were identified here. So if the Planning and Zoning Commission was to recommend approval with, with satisfactory resolution of all of the items that you've noted in your report, albeit fairly extensive, does that put any responsibility on the applicant to correct those things before it goes to city council?
Um, no, you're, you're, you're a recommending board. Basically recommending to the council that, that they take care of those issues or resolve those issues. They don't, they can do what they want to do or what they feel is necessary to deal with the city council. I would suspect they would probably do their best to get most of those taken care of.
Prior to going to a city council meeting?
Yeah, I would, I would think there's, you know, there's other complications in terms of the 30 days. It sounds like 30 days is already up. They could in the meantime make a claim that the plat's already approved. Now that doesn't, from what I understand, that doesn't mean that the city has to provide any service. This creates a bigger issue that everybody has to deal with. So, but I guess answering your question is, I don't think it technically puts a requirement on them that they take care of. You're, you're simply making a recommendation.
So if by fact this, the application was that date of June, why is it on our agenda? If it's, if it's approved by the lapse of time?
Um, I don't, I can't answer that other than, um, we could ask the, Mr. Pedego what he, what he thinks. They, they would have, they need to make their own decision in terms of, is it approved or not? But again, our, our recommendation back to the, back to you would probably be process it on through the way it should be processed. Do your due diligence, make a recommendation to the council based on what you have. If there's other issues like the 30-day clock, for example, that might complicate that, then that would, that would be dealt with separately.
Okay. So act as if, if that clock has not expired, is what I think I heard you say?
Yeah, I think that would be in your, in the city's best interest and in the developer's.
All right, thank you. Alright, thank you. Okay.
Okay, I just, just for y'all's information, I just want to read the letter that came from the city, our, to our engineer.
Okay.
June, dated June ninth, and I'm, I'm happy to forward this on. Um, Dear Mr. Dayton, Pursuit Chapter Ten, Exhibit A, Section Two Point One B One of the Code of Ordinance to the City of Hazlet. The city has no later than the tenth business day after the date an application is submitted to make a written determination whether the application is complete and to inform the applicant to completeness of any application. The reference applications were received on June seventh. The tenth business day after submittal of the application is June eighteenth. In accordance with the above code reference, the final plat application for Sweetgrass Place One A and One C has been deemed complete. Please note that review comments will be forwarded to you by June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. If you should have any questions, feel free to contact us. We did, that was from Wes Morrison, Planning Development, correct? That, that's the information that I've got. My attorney, so it's approved, not, just giving you the information.
Right, thank you.
So I have a question. I mean, are we talking basically in this, in the, the letter, I guess, that we got from, I don't have your letter, I just have from Duke and Tura, then items one through eleven are basically questions about the plat, and then general construction plan comments are followed after that.
Right.
So the plats one through eleven?
Yes.
Do we approve, or I mean, what's the process, and I'm sorry, I'm ignorant of the process here. Approving the final plat if we thought all of the comments in red produced by the attorney were going to be addressed and felt comfortable with that. We are not approving construction plans, I assume that, or recommending approval of construction plans. Those still have to be reviewed, and there's some serious comments. I mean, one of them is a thirty-foot water box, thirty-foot deep water. And that's a serious concern. And, and there's others that, that you've commented on, and some, Mr. Pettigo has said, for instance, with the east, if we have relatively shallow lines and nine-foot separation between water and sewer, twenty-foot might work. But if you're talking about a fifteen-foot or twenty-foot deep water line, that's going to be tough to maintain without maybe construction on the, or wider regions. So there's, there's comments that, from an engineer's standpoint, need, need to be looked at very thoroughly, and I think that's a matter of maybe your engineer sitting down with their engineer and, and working through the construction plans to see that everything is compatible with not only the design requirements, but just construction and maintenance. I, I'm also concerned about this letter from Lisa Cloud about the floodplain study and the drainage. I, I don't have any answers on that. She says in her, "May be required to widen Buffalo Creek." Well, you just don't go do that. You just don't go do that. I mean, that's the, that's, once again, I mentioned the Corps of Engineers. That's a navigable waterway. Just don't get into stuff. Uh, I'm not familiar with, I'm from Houston. I'm very familiar with the, with the, with the floodplain issues down there and, and the Harris County Flood Control District. I don't, I don't know who has jurisdiction over things like Buffalo Creek here. I don't, I'm not even aware if there's a Harris County Flood Control District here. But, uh, I don't have any idea. I, I don't know, but it doesn't matter. If there's no water in there, if the Corps of Engineers has determined it's a navigable waterway, if it empties into a navigable waterway, it may be determined as such. I don't know. That, that I, I don't have an answer. You probably don't have a doubt, but I think that's something that needs to be at least asked. And that's part of what I would do if I was reviewing construction.
I'm sorry. Yeah, since it came from a public comment, you know, I think we've always tried to be very open with the feedback, and I think that that'd be great.
I, I don't disagree that Hazlet Park has drainage issues at all. Our role, since our water is coming down on our property, and we, all the water comes from Hazlet Park onto our property, is to make sure we don't create anything that would increase that water surface back onto Hazlet Park property. We, we're not there to necessarily fix the Hazlet Park property. That, that was done a long time ago. Whatever the developer did, or whoever built that subdivision, didn't, obviously didn't build it the right way. So, you know, our flood study, what it showed, and, and, you know, those flood studies are very technical in nature, so I, I mean, I understand for somebody that's not an engineer, they don't understand what those cross-sections are saying. But what that flood study showed and was approved by staff, whenever we got our floodplain grading permit, was that we are not backing up water onto, um, onto that property in any way. So if anything, I think, you know, our water is getting out, and we're getting it out in a way where now the water coming down doesn't, right now, whenever it's just kind of sitting out in a field and it's not engineered and developed in a way, it doesn't have the way to get out the way it is today. So, um, and then your, your questions about Waters United States, we have a, a determination and a consultant that works with, that goes out, looks at these areas and determines whether they are navigable waters, and these are not. I was out there today, this, this Buffalo Creek is, um, you could, you could drive, I could drive my truck through it. It's nice, it's just a, a open swell, but, you know, if you look at our plans, what we're doing is we are developing in a way where we're not getting into Buffalo Creek um, with our major improvements. So what we're doing is we're guiding the water around, building a better channel for it to flow through and then get out. So the flood study shows that, the construction plans show that. I mean, everything, and, and again, that staff has given us a floodplain grading permit based on the review and approval of that flood study. So I'm not sure why we're re-reviewing it. Same thing with the TIA, that was approved during the preliminary plat. We're re-reviewing it, and there's nothing that's changed in our plans, um, as far as what we're going to go build, so. Anyway, that, just, just to respond to that, and I understand that it can be, that the problems with Hazlet Park end up looking like they're our problems, but we're downstream of it. All their flow goes to us. We're not bringing flows onto them. If that makes sense. So our job is just to make sure we don't backwater up onto them, and that's our job, and that's what our flood studies show.
So you're saying the flood study does indicate that? It shows direction of flow and does, okay.
And it, and it, I mean, it shows existing conditions, and it shows exactly what she describes, that there is a problem at the end of that road on Hazlet Park, because it's in the floodplain.
Yeah.
And it, it's been there. It's nothing we did, it's, that's just what it is. Our job is just not to make it work.
But your study does indicate it's not to make it work.
We're not going to make it work, that's correct.
And that study, that was reviewed by the previous, it wasn't reviewed by these guys, by Belcher, right?
It is now being reviewed, but it was also reviewed by the previous staff.
Right.
Who issued the, the floodplain and the grading.
And he issued both permits.
That's correct.
But Belcher's reviewing that study now?
We are, and I don't know exactly what he issued in the past, but this is a, a, uh, a flood study done on a, on a map stream, a FEMA map stream, which, which affects a floodplain and a floodway, so the city can't approve that. The city would simply say that we're in agreement with this, and it goes on to FEMA for final approval. As far as we know, that hasn't happened, so we don't know where FEMA is in their review process, or if it's been submitted to FEMA. We did notice that there are some inconsistencies between the flood study and the grading plan. Now, I can't speak to specific properties downstream, because I don't remember, we didn't look at that particular property, but uh, in our, in our review, as we continue on, or presuming we continue on, then we might pick up some of those things, but the, the, the main purpose of us looking at a flood study is to see if it generally complies with what the city's ordinances require, as well as if the city can support that um, for submittal to FEMA for final review and approval. And if the construction plans are fulfilling what the flood study allowed to be done, and that's generally to do a modify floodplains or floodways, that we're not to the point where we can say that, that, um, we could recommend a, a approval of that. That's what happened in the past, I can't speak.
So do we need to see FEMA's response in order to be determinate that this, there's not an issue here?
Um, we, we can generally predict whether FEMA will have a, a negative response, but typically that would be one of the final conditions of a, of an approval of a, of a final plat, is that this is subject to FEMA's final approval, because that may take six months. That's not a, that's a timing issue that is not in anybody's best interest. Obviously, uh, he's in a predicament, because he's been allowed to do grading. We probably wouldn't have, you know, we have, I have good twenty-twenty hindsight, I probably wouldn't have recommended that grading be approved until a set of construction plans are nearing approval. And again, we, we found a lot of questions, and those plans affect that final plat. That's the purpose of doing the requiring plans to be approved prior to the city accepting a final plat. And, uh, one of the biggest things that Mike had mentioned was, uh, and usually these things are resolved in the preliminary plat process, but again, we weren't around, so I don't know exactly what happened. But your ordinance requires that land proposed to be subdivided must be served adequately by essential public facilities, which includes water and sewer lines. Well, obviously, there's a downstream sewer line problem. Uh, there's inadequate capacity. How that gets resolved, I don't know. I doubt that they want to pay the, if it's two and a half million dollars to, to fix it, they probably don't want to pay that, and they probably didn't build that into the project. City probably doesn't want to pay that. Somewhere in there, there's some kind of solution. Those, those, we like to work those out in the preliminary plat process, and I apologize for whatever happened. We're now at the final plat process. We have found that there's inadequate facilities downstream to provide for the subdivision, but we can't recommend approval of a final plat, kind of where they are, where you're going. And we'll do our best to help facilitate this, but there's a lot of big issues, that's one of them, that, that affects a, a city and a developer in a negative way.
So if FEMA comes back and says that the, uh, drainage plan is inadequately supported by Buffalo Creek and the plans for that, does that prevent them from continuing to grade in that fashion and, and, and create runoff that FEMA does not agree with?
If FEMA didn't agree with their plan, with their flood study that said they were going to do this, then it would be up to them to go return it back to the original condition that it was in, or fix whatever comment that FEMA might have, re- resolve that particular issue, or, uh, uh, to FEMA's satisfaction, but it, it would remain their responsibility. It would affect their plat. So typically, when you are waiting that, for that multi-month period of getting FEMA's final approval, everybody better be happy that that flood study is, is ready for approval when you start working on a subdivision. There's a risk, there's a risk associated. Yes, if FEMA said no, then it would be up to them to put it back in that, that effect plat.
Hey, Greg, this is Matt, just to, to clarify something. The Corps of Engineers approves four oh four permits for the Clean Water Act, and Fort Worth District here would handle it in their downtown. Usually, Clean Water Act, I mean, they have set parameters that they look for. Um, but it, I, I, you know, I, I don't want to speak for them. It, uh, permit actions are usually, they have nationwide permits that are, uh, usually don't take that long to get, get approved.
And you kind of have three things we're talking about here. Clean Water Act and the navigable waters, and there's waters of the U.S. that has affected several agencies.
Right, those are two separate laws, the, the section four oh four of the Clean Water Act and, and the, uh, Waters of the U.S. are, yeah, two separate things.
I think PCEQ has some requirements on diversion of public water, so all of those we expect to be taken care of. Now, we may ask questions, but you really don't have anything in your ordinance that's hard for you to enforce federal and state requirements, as opposed to those that are imposed on you that you have to enforce, or what's in your ordinance.
Okay, so I'll ask this question. So this thing is, has lapsed in time, and if the applicant starts building this out and it, before that permit, or the, the study is complete, and they find that it's, that it does not meet the requirements to maintain, you know, the floodway or the floodplain or whatever, does the applicant then run the risk that they have to scratch the, the project off the face of the earth and, or, or somehow invest money into improving the capacity of Buffalo Creek?
Um, uh, could be true, yeah.
Even if the final plat has been approved prior to the, um, the FEMA study or the four oh four permit being completed?
Well, again, we, we, even if yes, but, uh, we would, we would normally recommend that it be approved with that condition, because not, you don't have to file it until, um, everything is acceptable. By then, the FEMA study is going to be approved or disapproved by FEMA. You don't want to file a plat, so the locks are ready to be solved, means that he's completed all of the internal and external, uh, improvements that are necessary to service the development. But by that time, uh, that FEMA, that study would have been solved. Uh, I would think that us at the local level, their engineer and your engineer, and the developer probably know enough about what FEMA is expecting, because they do publish guidelines that you have to follow. Then again, there is engineering judgment in all of this that has to be dealt with. But most of us think similarly, and standards of engineering are typically there for us come to a point where everybody feels comfortable with flood study, and FEMA will look at it. They may come back with some administrative or some particulars that they're concerned about, and typically those are resolved. But at some point, um, we usually feel comfortable as well on letting them, suggesting that they go ahead and proceed at their own risk, no matter what.
So, I mean, we're talking about FEMA. Has this, Mr. Pettigo, has the study been submitted?
Being mentioned is, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Travis, um, before he left as the city engineer, was also the floodplain administrator. I think that's, I think that's correct. So you, as a city official, you said, okay, we've got a floodplain administrator. We submit a, a flood study to that floodplain administrator that knows the rules with FEMA, knows how to review these documents. They give us comments, we address those comments, and then they say, okay, yes, this meets all those rules. We've done enough work with FEMA, and FEMA knows that if the floodplain administrator has looked at it, reviewed it, it's not meaning they're not going to review it, but they're going to look at that and say, okay, yeah, this, this meets all the requirements, meets the floodplain administrator. So we're not just willy-nilly out there going, hey, I think George is right. We, we've all done this enough, and we know what FEMA wants and what they would like. And so we build our projects and design our projects in conformance with the guidelines that they give. And that's what's in that flood study. And there's state law that goes into that, as far as not making sure we raise water surface elevations on people and things like that. So all of that has been put into that document.
Who did that flood study?
Emily Horn. So Hazlet Parkway was being designed, and we thought, they've done all the work and everything underneath that bridge.
Right.
Let's use that same flood study that everybody has deemed appropriate, and let's build it further back across our property, and that's what we do.
Okay, so they, yeah, they did everything along. Okay, so they, yeah, they did everything along, uh, that.
And the process typically goes, because the LOMER process, whenever you go into FEMA, FEMA won't change the map until you've actually gone and built the project. And then you submit your ASWIS, you go out and shoot the grades and say, okay, we built it according to the flood study that the, that the town administrator, flood administrator approved. And now we've gone and built it, and here's our shot showing you we built it exactly the way we did. They then take that and map and change the map to follow the new flood study. That's the process. So that's why you can't get FEMA approval on a LOMER until you go build it. That's the process. That we, we didn't quite, we missed a couple of steps in there, but that the main one is that we had a floodplain administrator review this before we went out and started doing dirt work, and we got a grading permit and a floodplain permit.
Any other questions? All right. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to make a motion. Yeah, based on uh, the, the, the time that has elapsed. I make a motion, we recommend approval of the final plat upon success- successful resolution of all the final plat requirements and, and other comments provided by uh, the city engineering review team of George Belchif and his, his staff. There a second? Say there's been a motion made to recommend approval upon successful resolution of all the items reflected in the letters, and seconded all in favor. We're all against? Same? Oh, I'm sorry, you're an alternate candidate, Matt, sorry. All right, motion passes. All right, moving on. Agenda item four B. If we can find an answer in all of this a little faster this time. Hold a public hearing discussing considering that a recommendation regarding a final plat of Sweet Sweetgrass subdivision, phase one C being five, fifty-one point one acres located in the Eldridge Hopkins abstract number six forty-six in the city of Paslet. We'll begin with our city, our staff presentation.
Let's try to walk you through this one. You'll see some uh, similar comments, some identical comments, um, the plans that were presented to us for review, um, cover fifty-one point one two five acres out of that uh, apparent, apparent tract, two hundred and sixty-two acre. And it's a phase one C basically um, accesses off of Blue Mound and then a proposed extension of Intermodal Parkway. Um, on the western portion of Intermodal Parkway. We've got some uh, final plat review comments as they pained to the face of the final plat. And then, again, similar manner to the letter that we just um, hashed through a few, few minutes ago. We get into the general construction plan or general observation of the project. And then uh, detailed, detailed uh, engineering comments in the back according to our review of the appropriate section of the applicant's construction plan. Um, again, we've got the same downstream uh, sanitary sewer capacity issue that we'd like to bring to your attention. Noted on item one A and B under the general um, construction plan comment. Uh, there's uh, rerouting of a structure, or a gas well road that affects the grading. Um, that gas well access to the uh, what would be on the northwest portion of the property, that gas well would appear to be crossing or need to cross the uh, designated floodplain and floodway. We did not find that addressed in the flood study, which may or may not affect the grading and the layout of the subdivision. So we want to make sure everybody understood that. Um, had some general comments regarding the PD zoning, lack of information regarding trails and various other requirements under the PD zoning for the project. Um, this, this section of the project, because it was adjacent to Blue Mound Road, the ordinance requires that um, when a development comes in, that development's responsible for upgrading that adjacent section of roadway uh, to the minimum standards of the city uh, being at least two lanes. That particular road, Blue Mound's designated as a MA four D under thoroughfare plan, which is a hundred and ten foot right away, four lane divided roadway. So the applicants put together a set of construction plans um, for Blue Mound Road, I guess for the northern portion of it. Um, the plans stop short of the uh, applicant's western property lines. Um, they do carry it to the east property line where it transitions back over to the existing footprint of the roadway. Um, there's some information in the plans uh, that would indicate a six to eight foot tall retaining wall adjacent to the southern right away line of Blue Mound Road with no information on that wall. The designer construction of that facility, that's a, that's a large retaining wall that can't just be um, thrown out. That's obviously got to be engineered. That was something that was a um, concern. Um, the information provided in the, in the construction plans for Blue Mound Road did not appear to take into account the drainage from the southern right away line and the water that comes off the hill. Um, there's information that's lacking in the construction plans regarding the grade of the southern portion of the roadway, which would directly affect cross access from the northbound lanes to the um, or from the east and westbound traffic as you try to turn into adjacent properties. So without a, without an analysis, you know, divided roadway, you got to keep those roads at the same elevation. Start having cross elevation issues, especially in portions like this where we have, where we don't necessarily have a, um, the full right away on the southern side of the road. You run into issues with folks being able to, to access um, on the southern portion of the roadway. Or southern properties along the southern right away, if that makes sense. So that's comment B one. You know, when you divi- when you design a divided roadway, you have to put some sort of preliminary design together um, for the adjacent portion of the roadway. That's just how you design a, uh, does a, a divided roadway. So there's, I don't, there was no information that we could find in the preliminary drawings. Um, and now we're at final, final drawings, and there's still no information in there regarding the, the southern portion of the roadway. But would appear that, that that was not taken into account when this was designed. I talked about the drainage area map. The applicant has not included offsite contributing flows from that roadway from the southern tracks that abut Blue Mound Road. When you design half of a roadway, you really want to make sure you get your drainage right, make sure you have adequately sized facilities. There were actually no drainage plans contained in the roadway plans. They reference the construction drawings for the subdivision. Um, so these are, these need to be a standalone set of construction drawings that can be built off of. So that's a, that's kind of a concern in here. Um, there appears to be an additional thirty, twenty-seven and a half CFS of post-developed flow crossing the roadway onto the southern right away of Harmon Road. Um, directly upstream of a, of an existing uh, driveway in Culver. There's, there was no information in the plans um, showing the adequacy of, of the facilities on the southern half of the roadway to, to handle those increased um, flows. And so what we're asking the applicant is to clarify, to, to show that those facilities have adequate capacity and or reduce their flow to predeveloped conditions, right? So um, that, and that could dictate some of the, some of the grading on that portion of the, of the subdivision as well as the the proposed storm drainage for the, for the roadway. Your ordinance requires a sidewalk in that roadway section. There's no sidewalk shown. Minor comment, but ordinance requires that. Um, none of the, none of the driveways along the route were identified for um, size, type, capacity for analysis or review to determine if they're adequate, they need to be increased, et cetera. Um, there appears to be grading in slopes that extend beyond the right away and or platted portions of the property with no, no uh, dedication or uh, notation that offsite grading easements would be provided, temporary construction easement. Um, that's Blue Mound Road. Um, those are our comments with Blue Mound Road. Um, the, the flood study, you know, the study does not appear to address the rerouted um, gas well road. The plans don't show the rerouted gas well road. But in the concept plan, the, the gas well road is shown to cross the floodplain and floodway. So the flood study should probably take into account that, and there's no plans provided for that, which may or may not affect the the layout of the subdivision moving forward. The grading, of course, on the um, adjacent, the, the gas well road that's being um, relocated on the western property line, that appears to be diverting uh, increased flows onto those adjacent properties. With no provision to return that to predeveloped flows and or adequate access for maintenance of what is proposed to be open channel flow for the applicants. Um, taking runoff collected in the streets and then dumping it into a ditch. Um, there's no ca- uh, cross sections provided. There's no ditch capacity analysis. And it would appear based on the grading in that area that um, I'm not quite sure how you would convey the amount of water that they're proposing safely. Um, and be able to access and maintain that facility with the lots as configured along the west property line. Uh, traffic impact analysis, we're, we're trying to sort through that to determine um, what it says and what may or may not have been recommended that may or may not be included in, in their plans for um, Intermodal or Blue Mountain or any, any other offsite uh, intersections or roadways. And the rest, the rest of these comments are really detailed construction plan comments. I'd be happy to walk through any of those, or if you have any questions for myself or George or the applicant. Probably entertain those now, but um, big picture, those are the, those are our concerns with this one. I, I would like to point out under the sewer, sewer portion, let's go to the sewer portion of the letter. Um, it's provided on page seven. Um, they're proposing to divert, I believe it's thirty-four lots. They don't have an overall sewer plan, so you kind of have to flip back and forth between several sheets and match lines and stuff, but there's thirty-four lots that are directed to Caraway Edition. Caraway Edition is the development um, that was constructed to the east. And it consists of roughly three hundred and eighty lots, and we weren't a part of that subdivision. Just had to pull the plans because we're tying to facilities that were built um, adjacent to us. So in preparation for this letter, we pulled those plans. We looked at the sewer system that was put in with Caraway. Caraway has an eight inch sewer line, a main vein, if you will, that comes and ties to the existing sewer line that runs north, south on Harmon Road. That main vein is an eight inch sewer line. It does not have the capacity for an additional thirty-four lots from Sweetgrass. When you take into account those flows um, plus I and I, so I'm not sure. That's another sewer capacity issue, right? Um, wanted to make sure that was pointed out. You look at your sewer system master plan, the flows from this development were to go north into Buffalo Creek. They weren't, they weren't contemplated to go through the Caraway Edition. And maybe that's why that line was not oversized to handle those additional flows. But at this point right now, if we were to um, allow those flows to come into the Caraway Edition, you would, you'd be looking at some uh, capacity issues. That line appears to be overloaded at this point.
Overloaded with this additional.
Um, that, I, I believe that last leg probably should have been a ten inch line, just based on our cursory review. The Caraway Edition from the first two streets, I don't have those right up hand, but it's, it's a pretty flat line, and there was adequate depth to get down to the north, south sewer line along Harmon, so um, without studying those plans in detail, but just taking a, taking a lot count, understanding that every single lot in Caraway Edition is going to go through that line, that segment of line. I believe that downstream leg of, of the Caraway Edition appears to not have sufficient capacity.
At the point of connection between.
Mr. Wallach, let's hold our questions until after the public hearing, okay? And we move to discussion. Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you have any other questions for me.
Uh, we'll hold our questions and we'll uh, we'll come back to you after the public hearing. Hey, Mr. Petticoat or Ms. Ventura, would any comments that you would like to offer at this point?
Absolutely. Brett Petticoat, Terramana, um, forty-four sixteen West Levers Lane, Dallas, seven five two oh nine. Um, really, a, a lot of these comments are, I think, um, just need to, somebody needs to, and I, they, they didn't have a lot of time to review it, so just a quick example, the Caraway development, there's actually two connections into the ten inch line. About half the community goes into one section of the ten inch line, the other half goes into to the other. So there's, there's two connections, not just one, that you need to look at. Because there's only about a hundred and fifty lots that go in, plus the, the forty-nine lots that we're talking about moving in from. Uh, and there is capacity in that line. We can show that if, I mean, it's engineering calculations that can be done by them, or we can show them those calculations if they want them. But there's plenty of capacity in that line. Um, that was, that was a decision that was made years ago by um, stubbing that line, because what happens is the contours of that area actually flow towards Caraway. And with this master study or those set of plans, that little area was kind of missed. And so uh, on that set of plans for a drainage area that would go into that line. So the engineer asked us, well, why don't we just go ahead and stub a line in case in the future, somebody needs to bring that drainage that way? We're utilizing that line that we built. It's got capacity. We can show those capacity. And there's two connections to that ten inch line, not just one in, in Caraway. So one line isn't trying to carry three hundred and sixty lots. Two lines are carrying three hundred and sixty lots, if that makes sense. So a, a further deep dive into those plans will show that. Um, those are things that we typically would work through with review and, and make sure that we, we address those. Um, the, the gas well road um, doesn't affect, the one that they were talking about running through the floodplain, doesn't affect the one C plat. Um, just, we haven't talked about it, but that gas well road runs through the floodplain today. And we're just moving it around a little bit, and we will make sure that that doesn't impact with the flood plane or with our flood study. We can show that as well. Um, that's, I mean, the, there was not a flood study done when the gas company decided to put that ra- original road down. That's kind of a private property issue. They build those lines with the gas well permits. They do all that. We're just moving it around. Kind of almost a private matter between the parties that, that were doing that. We're, we're actually doing that, trying to help the city, because when Hazlet Parkway went in, there was a, there was um, access to some of these gas wells that aren't able to get to them today when Hazlet Parkway is under construction. So we were actually trying to help maneuver some things and make sure it works for everybody to kind of fix the problem that was created when Hazlet Parkway was built through there. So we're just trying to solve problems is all. Um, the uh, there were a couple of other comments on the grading plans as far as the uh, the gas well road ran along the west side. That's detailed as far as the grading of that, where it shows where it's going. Um, we're not increasing flows onto our adjacent property owner. Uh, we said we wouldn't do that. And we can show with calculations. Again, if we need more detailed calculations than what's shown on the plans, we're happy to provide that uh, to the reviewer. Um, and uh, this, I mean, we keep kind of talking about this thirty inch water line or thirty foot deep, we're not going to build a thirty foot water. I wouldn't do that to David. Um, I know that's, so if, if there's something on the plan that shows that, we'll get it corrected, get it taken care of. Um, but you know, I, we're not going to build a thirty foot deep water line. Um, the um, you know, all the same reasons, Blue Mound Road, it was clear. Um, the, the reason we didn't build all the way to the end of Blue Mound Road on our property is because it would create an unsafe condition in our minds. It's, um, we're already building more than what's in front of our property. We're building on the adjacent property owner to take it all the way over to the intersection so that you can have a, a new intersection built between Blue Mountain and Intermodal. So that'll be a nice, clean intersection there. Um, on the west end of the property, there, we were trying to On the west end of the property, we were trying to pull back a little bit before we put in the permanent concrete pavement because in the future, when those lanes get built, there may need to be some adjustment of grades made so that it doesn't create an unsafe situation. We're still paving a new section. We just made it more of a temporary section of asphalt to transition over so that it's easy to take out whenever the new road comes in. It's still built to the standards that you would want to see built. It's not, when I say temporary, it's not built properly. It's built per the standard. So we're just building a section, but we pulled that pavement back so there could be a smooth transition into the existing Blue Mountain that just finished getting built. So you now have a continuous roadway, a smooth transition. Otherwise, you would have a road going up to the adjacent property owner on our west in a barricade right there. And then you would have a transition that would happen. And so it just creates where somebody just wants to jump off the end of that thing and the grade, so we just pulled back. There's ways to cover that. If, I mean, if somebody thinks we're trying to get out of putting pavement in, that's not what we're doing. The increased drainage that was referenced going across Blue Mound Road, what we did and is we designed the facilities for what we thought would be the future 100-year storm building. We made assumptions because we don't own the property at that corner. That's still owned by the Brumball family. We don't know what it's going to be developed as. So we assumed that since it's on a hard corner, that we might want to pick a more intense use and put a higher intense use factor on that, so like it would be a commercial zoning. If that ever came in for commercial development, y'all would require them to detain that drainage because most of the drainage comes off of that property. That's what's creating the increased runoff. Not, so if we need to show that and show a capacity analysis that it all works today, we're happy to do that. Again, it's fine. The Plumery plat was very clear on Intermodal that we were building it in two phases. If you look at the Plumery plat approval, there was a section of Intermodal that we were going to build, and then another section when we come in in phase two. So it's, I mean, we just were doing exactly what was on that plat, following that because that's what we said we would do at the Plumery plat stage. Again, there's comments and things and that are in here that we've corrected and said, you know, there's some of this that's just not quite right. And we're happy to work through those. We're not trying to, I mean, again, they were under the gun trying to review all this, and we get it. So I'm not faulting them, but we would typically sit down and work through this and go through these comments. With that being said, I'll let Misty kind of do the real fast radio talk disclaimer stuff.
Misty Ventura, Shoot Ventura, 9406 Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218, on behalf of the applicant. In the spirit that Brett presented of solving problems, I would point out that the plat application before you satisfies all prior approvals, satisfies the subdivision regulations. We appreciate the concerns raised by the town, the city's engineer. To the extent that the commission is able to approve subject to conditions, we would respectfully request that you direct the city engineer to supplement their letter with pinpoint sites to the provisions of the subdivision regulations that are deficient or that we fail to comply with. I think it would help everyone solve problems if we all understood with specificity which Hazlet regulation we fail to comply with so that we can do a better job solving those problems. I would respectfully request that you approve the plat even with the conditions recommended. And I'm available to answer questions to the extent there are any.
In addition to that, I just want to make sure that everybody knows too, there were, in the comment letter that we received, there were 11x17s with the red line markups that were mentioned. And then obviously comments on the TIA and flood study or whatever. We have not seen any of that. There was an attachment that was talked about, final flash contain all city of Hazlet standard notes per attachment A. We don't have, we have not received any of that. So if y'all do make those approvals, we would really like to get our hands on what the full level of comments are because we still haven't seen this full level of comments. Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and again, I have a number of comment cards that reference both Agenda Item 4A and 4B, so I'll call on those individuals. And then if there's anybody else who wishes to speak for or against Agenda Item 4B, you are free to raise your hand, and I'll call on you at that time. So beginning with Ms. McLeod.
Thank you, and I'd forgotten to give my address last time. It's 313 Shriver Drive. First, I just want to refute a couple of things Mr. Pettigo had said. And one was that Hazlet Park has always had drainage issues, and it must be the fault of the developer. He has no firsthand knowledge. He has thrown the developer, Eileen Bagby, under the bus. I have been there 20, over 27 years. I can tell you that it has not been this bad. Not always. Well, on Shriver, it has not been that bad, not on our end. After they put the drainage canal from Shriver through Odessa, that relieved almost everything. We didn't have an issue. We didn't have it overflowing our driveways, overflowing our sidewalks. That fixed that issue because it directed the water through Odessa and behind the houses and down to the creek. So the other thing about, you know, what she had mentioned with water going on Blue Mound Road, I have seen that. I was afraid to drive through it. It was fast. It was muddy, and it was crossing Blue Mound Road from the south to the north, going at a fast speed. I crossed it, but I wasn't sure how deep it was. Didn't know if I was going to get swept off the road, but I had already started and was on down the hill, and there were other cars behind me, and I had to go. Anybody addressed that issue yet? No. And I still do not see how he can say that by them channeling the water so that it gets to Buffalo Creek and the fact that, A, it's on his property, the water has been going, Hazlet Park has been around since the late 1980s, if I am correct. That water's been going down there for that long a time, long before it was their property. That is the natural flow of the drainage. And to now say that, well, we're putting it on their property. It's our problem. It will not be our problem when we flood. It's going to be the city's problem. It's going to be the developer's problem. It's going to turn into a giant mess. Because if you've seen the water lately, and it's only been this bad again in about the last five-ish years where it's actually overflowed everything, it was fine for the longest time. And so I don't know where Caraway's water goes. I don't know if it ends up on Buffalo Creek or not. But I know that's when we started having issues. So for them to say that putting the water there faster because it's going to be channeled and therefore Buffalo Creek is going to fill up faster is not going to affect our drainage and our flooding, well, that's not true because if Buffalo Creek is full, and because it is just a little lazy creek, and it's most of the time dry, it's a dry bed until it rains. And when that water comes in, the water that gets there first travels. Everybody else has to wait until the rain stops, the rain slows down, or the water moves on. So if their water is going to get there first, what's going to happen to Hazlet Park? What's going to happen to Brentwood? What's going to happen to Maxwell Estates? Anybody else that flows into Buffalo Creek, we're going to sit there with our water for longer periods of time. The more it rains, the harder it rains, the longer it sits there. It's not going to be in the drainage ditch. It's going to be over the drainage ditch, and it's going to be wide. When the city came along with their construction and they had to redo my sidewalk because the steamrollers broke my sidewalk, they had to put in a new drainage, a new sidewalk and a new drainage. And when they were putting the boards on to set the concrete, they blocked that. That was during all those heavy rains in May. I had a river in my front yard going over the sidewalk, 10 feet wide a minimum, because there was nowhere for that water to go. Okay, well, as soon as they took down the boards, it drained, but that's just the same premise. If Buffalo Creek is full, where's my water going to go? Where is all the water of Hazlet Park going to go? And you cannot come back and say, it's the developer's fault from 1980s. It was not that bad. Only parts. Ours was not bad, and it was, it got a whole lot better when they put that drainage channel in. And that was how many years ago? Many. And we didn't have that problem until in the last few years, and it's only going to get worse. So that issue must be resolved before they can build. I'm sorry. That is an important, important issue. I don't care about how many houses they put in there. Personally, I hate the subdivision. I hate 10 feet across. I hate houses that are less than half an acre. When he came before us with Caraway, he came for a variance for half-acre lots. This was long before a planned development ever existed. And so where did all this come from? I don't know, but it's...
Ma'am, if you could try to get to your conclusion, if you could, for me, please.
Again, I really think that we need to focus on the drainage issues. I know there's other issues with the plans and everything about that, but you're not focusing on the issue of the neighbors. You're not trying to protect the current citizens of Hazlet just for the money that he will make with this development. We have been here a long time. We are our citizens. We are taxpayers. We don't want to be flooded out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Ritchie, do you wish to speak for or against this Agenda item?
Ritchie, 404, Blue Mound Road East. Vote for the approval of this Agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against it? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Patricia Hillborne, 2207 Virginia Lane, Hazlet, Texas. I'm a 35-year citizen of Hazlet, and I would respectfully ask for you to vote to recommend approval on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hillborne. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against? Hey, recognizing nobody else came forward, we'll close the public hearing. We'll open it up for discussion. So I'm going to start with a really important question. When was this application submitted?
Chairman, I actually found the email from Wes. It was submitted at the same time as 1A.
So this was conditionally approved through the expiration of the response period?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions for city staff or the applicant?
No, I just noticed that as far as the plat goes, every question 2, 3, 4, set of all the way through. The response is the revision will be included prior to recording the final plat. Reference note not been provided to the applicant, stuff like that. So there's things on here that you're saying, I guess, kind of simple. I wanted on the plat first. If there's a, that should clearly delineate Hazlet City limits by revision will be included. If that's a requirement of the city, why didn't the plat, so they didn't have to catch like... I guess.
You know, this happens from time to time as turnover and staff, things like that. People like to make comments a certain way and see the plats. It doesn't mean that the plat necessarily doesn't meet the subdivision requirements. It's just a request for notations and things that they would want to see on there versus the way we've done it on other plats. So we've submitted them as we've done it on other plats, and they would like it to be different. So we're saying, okay, fine. We'll be happy to change it and do it the new way. It's just a little different than what we've done on previous plats. That's it. I mean, and typically, again, this would be worked out before you see it, and they would make, they would say, hey, there's a north arrow that needs to be moved a little bit. And we'd say, okay, that's fine. We'll move it and we'll resubmit it. That's just what we do.
Any other questions?
Once again, we're addressing the plat here.
We are addressing, all of that is included. The construction plans are part of the documents that were reviewed by the city staff.
For clarification, Mr. Halsey, isn't it approved for this portion of the review? And then it still has to, we have 30 days beyond that 30-day period for it to go to city council for... Okay, well, I think it's a fair question. Yeah, but I'm not opposed to making, to taking action here, but I also respect that you didn't have to bring this to us. You didn't have to be here tonight. So are you willing to allow us to take action tonight, or do you want to withdraw the review?
Misty Ventura, on behalf of the applicant, we're here this evening respectfully requesting this commission to approve the plat. With respect to legal advice, I work for him. I'm his lawyer, and I would recommend that you only take legal advice from your lawyer.
Yeah, I'm not seeking legal advice from you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. We're here before you this evening, and we're respectfully requesting you to approve the plat.
Yes. So just for clarification, we only recommend, we don't approve? That the approval happens by the city council?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'm going to make a motion. I make a motion. We recommend a city council approval of the final plat for the Sweetgrass subdivision, Phase 1C, being 51.1 acres, upon successful resolution of all final plat requirements and comments provided by the city engineers. Motion is made. Is there a second? If you have a clarif, if you have a... There's not, there has not been a second, so if you, so I can withdraw the motion and go back to discussion, or we can...
I still get the question about, so your motion, we're making a motion to approve the plat, but subject to not only the plat, but the structure.
The com, the...
This entire...
The entire document that was provided. Now, that doesn't mean that everything has, requires a change, but we just have to clarify.
Everything be a threat.
Correct.
All right, and, and, everything is...
So there's both, motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second to the motion. All in favor? Against? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on, Agenda Item 4C, hold a public hearing, discuss and consider a recommendation regarding the final plat of Lot 1, Block 1 of Westport Parkway Edition being a replat of lots 3 to 7, Block 1 of the Nance Ranch Industrial Park being 32.4 acres located on the north side of Westport Parkway, approximately 0.1... Approximately 0.5 miles east of Westport Parkway, an FM 156 intersection within the city of Hasslet. We are going to begin with our staff presentation.
Commissioners, this is a, um- Final plat of Lot 1, Block 1, being a replat of, of, uh, four lots in the Nance Ranch Industrial Park on the north side of, um, Westport Parkway. Essentially includes 32.4 acres. My understanding is that this preliminary replat and a site plan of this property were approved in April of 2021. The final plat is a replat of lots 3 through 7. That have never been developed. Uh, the applicant, as I understand it, is applying for a, a building permit to construct a 350,000 square foot warehouse distribution center. Access is through Westport Parkway. And there is, there are existing water and sewer lines, uh, along Westport Park, or adjacent to Westport Parkway. A sewer line to the north side of the track. We did a, uh- Did do that. We didn't do a review of this development. That basically what we have is, what you have. Uh, our understanding is, uh, similar to the, to other developments is that in plating or replating property, you have to show that there's adequate facilities to service the property. We don't know if that, that exists at this point. There's a roadway in front, um, there's a water line in front. We don't know what the demands of the development are. In developing their construction, there have been no construction plans provided, which is a requirement of plating in your city. So we don't, we don't know enough about the development to recommend for or against, uh, the class. Uh, we'd be happy to do that if, once those are, are provided to us. At this point, um, what you see is, what you have in front of you is what you see. Maybe if there's any general questions, I can answer that.
Thank, thank you. Is the applicant present this evening?
This is Matt Robertson with Lang and Engineering, 8951 Cypress Waters Boulevard in Copel, Texas, 75019.
Thank you for being an, an attendance this evening. Is there, are there any additional comments you would like to offer at this time?
Yes, sir. We did submit construction plans on June 7th.
And did you get any feedback from the city staff regarding those construction plans?
Uh, we have not received any comments or feedback. Despite numerous, uh, attempts to obtain information on the status of the project.
Okay. And are there any additional comments you would like to offer at this time?
Just that the development was reviewed by the prior staff and that the, uh, facilities there are adequate to serve the development.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 4C? Recognizing no one came forward, just speak on behalf of Agenda Item 4C, either for or against, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion. Um, and I just would like to start with, uh, getting clarification. So the application date on this, the, in the document packet we received reflects a application date of June 3rd, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So this would be in a similar condition as the other two agenda items that we've reviewed?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions? Either the city staff or the applicant?
Yeah, yeah. This is the development review committee, who's the final plan? Who's the development review committee?
I'm sorry, I, if that question was meant for the applicant, I wasn't able to catch that question.
No, sorry, I did not have the microphone on. Um, that was led by the planning director, the development review committee. It includes, uh, key city staff, including ci- city engineer. Uh, I was on that, building official, fire marshal, uh, as well. All the departments that would review. Now, my department does not have a review capacity, um, was there just for process, um, and just problem solving. But all the departments that would review that are part of the DRC.
And it also says the building permit for the warehouse is currently under review. Who is reviewing that pending approval?
That I do not know.
That not be? Michael, you are? Okay. So the, the, uh, but we've already established that there's utility capacity out there as far as when, when the development review committee is approved.
Yes, sir. The development review committee of Wes Morrison had written that on the, uh, agenda item. It did mean that all of those were looked at and approved.
Okay, I know that concern, Mr. Belcher, but, all right. And you're, then, uh, Michael, you're not looking at that part, you're just looking at the building structure itself. Okay.
I have maybe one or two questions and, uh, the applicant, can you hear me sufficiently?
Yes, sir, I can.
Great, thank you. So on the, uh, this is Jeremy Caddish speaking. So on the checklist, the final plat application checklist, uh, one of the requirements is to provide, uh, complete paper sets of the civil engineering plans. Um, and maybe Mr. Chambers, you can confirm whether or not those were submitted and reviewed as part of the, uh, the review board?
I cannot on that one. I have certain emails, certain emails where technical reviews were going on, did not thoroughly cycle through my office.
All right, thank you. And on the checklist, and this is probably a, a question for the applicant, on the checklist you submitted to the city, uh, for sections 1 through 13, everything's got a line through it. And I don't know if that line means that you just, that, that this checklist was ignored or that all of that was done?
Uh, it's meant to indicate that all those items were included with the application package, uh, also meant to encompass the building construction plans that we submitted.
Okay, so it wasn't striking through, it was acknowledgement that it was done?
Correct.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Anybody else have any questions?
No, I, I guess I'm assuming the, uh, we're looking at building permit. Maybe this is a question, Michael, but, uh, so that's not just the building, we're talking about site development, drainage, utility connections, et cetera, as part of their construction plan? Final flat, right, but I'm talking about, yeah. But, but site drainage and everything else, is that, is that reviewed by somebody else or is that going to be reviewed by Mike?
And I, as I understand, that would, those would need to go to Belcher.
Right. Okay, good.
Are there any other questions for the city staff or the applicant? If not, would somebody like to make a motion? Keeping in mind that this was, the, the review period has also elapsed on this agenda item.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of final flat of Lot 3 through 7 of the old Nance Ranch Industrial Park.
Yeah, there's been motion made to recommend approval, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Same? One abstention, motion passes. Four to one. Okay, moving on, Agenda Item 4D. Hold a public hearing, discuss, and consider to act on a recommendation to amend Section 2.5 of the zoning ordinance related to a, the three-fourth supermajority requirement of the city council to overrule a planning and zoning commission recommendation of denial on a, of a zoning change request. And we'll begin with our staff presentation. Is there anybody from city staff who is prepared to speak to this agenda item?
Is, uh, the mayor? The, uh, so what this has with regard to zoning recommendations should, uh, now the commission here can make a 3-2 vote and recommend a denial on a zoning change. But when it goes to the city council, and should the city council want to go the other way and approve a zoning change that you have denied, even though you did it with a simple majority? This current ordinance requires a supermajority by the council to override that. So what this is, is to remedy that. And that city council can override with a simple majority vote rather than a supermajority vote. And a sup- a supermajority is a 4-1 vote minimum. Any questions for me on that?
Okay, how about we hold our questions until after we open and close the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Halsey. Okay, at this time, uh, we will open the public hearing for Agenda Item 4D. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 4D? Okay, recognizing no one came forward to speak, uh, either for or against Agenda Item 4D, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion. So there was a similar, um, action taken on language changes within an ordinance, correct? Where, where the city council could, um, modify a, a, an approved language change within an ordinance and over, overriding the, the, the planning and zoning commission or something to that effect. It took place a couple of years ago.
I don't recall what, uh, happened a couple of years ago with, uh, changing an ordinance.
Yeah, but I believe this kind of just follows the same pattern that was established by that other, other change.
Called a what, a textual change?
Yes, that's correct. Yes. So instead of needing a supermajority to override that, it was, it was modified to be a simple majority.
Yeah. This is a, since this is, uh, changing this ordinance falls within the subdivision ordinance? That's the only reason you got it here, is due to our process that, uh, changes to the subdivision ordinance goes through the PNC. And you have a public hearing on the issue and your discussion and your act. So it, uh, again, uh, this is the, instead of, uh, having the city council require a supermajority of four, minimum four, one, uh, it would be a 3-2, just as you would have on, on passing the denial, just a 3-2 vote.
Would we see similar types of, um, abilities to o- override a PNC motion or recommendation at other municipalities around this area? Is this consistent with what we see occurring in other municipalities? Or are we stepping into a direction that maybe is?
I don't know when this occurred, uh, this change specifically, uh, and, or who, who proposed it. But this is, you know, relatively new to me. It is, in the past, it did not exist. Now, other city councils, I don't know what they do. It's not, uh, now, um, maybe this, well, the city of Fort Worth doesn't even have this, I don't believe. I don't believe, I have not checked their ordinances because I can't say facts.
Yeah, yep. I'll offer my personal perspective. We serve at, by appointment of the city council and the, you know, the city council is responsible for being responsive and to our citizens. Through the decisions and actions that they take. And ultimately, that decision should rest with the city council. And if they see a different, in my opinion, if they see something that we maybe didn't see, there should be a pathway for them to take a different direction.
And that's what this is about. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments that anybody would like to make?
Is it possible for somebody to look up the verbiage of the original that we changed before this came about to see if it's similar or how different it is? It's in our, it's either in our zoning or ordinance or in our duties.
The- What this, the prior ordinance did not have a requirement for a supermajority for the city council to overrule a, a, uh, PNC recommendation.
Okay, so tell me the difference between-
So the, the, the verbiage is, that it was just added, uh, to have, require a supermajority of the city council. That was the verbiage added because it didn't exist.
Can you clarify to me the difference between super and simple?
A, a, uh, simple majority, so there's five of you, five city council people. A simple majority is three, four. That's the majority, or three opposed, that's a majority. Three of you is a majority, a simple majority. A supermajority is four of you.
It's just adding one more person.
Correct. So the, the verbiage of the prior ordinance is just changed by adding, oh, the city council must have a supermajority to overrule a, uh, zoning denial by the PNC.
If somebody were to have an opposing view, maybe it would be on the lines that they didn't believe the city council should be able to override or take away from a decision that we've made. That might be an opposing view. I don't hold that view, but that might be what the opposing view would look like.
I've thought about this different ways, but that, uh, really kind of negates the aspect that this is an advisory board.
And that's why I started out the way I did, that, yeah, where we serve at the appointment of the city council, who in the city council serves at the, uh, leisure of the voters.
Does the county, uh, commission have any, uh, question management members? Do you have any, uh, questions for me more?
Mayor, Chair, Chairman, and if I may, this happened during y'all's rezoning, when y'all completely redid your zoning ordinance. I was here during that time. That language was changed from the previous. The discussion was, it is not uncommon for it to be a simple majority for council to overrule.
Thank you for that, uh, that, that reference, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Halsey. Thank you. Hey, is there someone who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, submit a revision to this, uh, authority to change it from a supermajority to a simple majority for the, uh, city council to overrule the, uh, decisions of, uh, planning and zoning.
Specifically the denial of a zoning change request?
Yeah.
So did you capture that in the motion? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion made to recommend approval? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion been seconded, all in favor? Unanimous motion passes. Unanimous motion passes. Moving on, agenda item four E, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a recommendation regarding a final plat of lots one to three, block one of the Hassett Crossing addition being twenty-nine acres of the Eldridge Hopkins survey abstract number six forty-six, generally located north of Paskey Drive, east of Intermodal Parkway, and west of Harman Road within the city of Hasslet. And we will begin with our staff presentation. Apologize for not being totally prepared, but we're trying to, kind of winging it. Can you go to the next page? So this is a, uh, track on the north side of Caraway, the proposal is to subdivide a portion of that track, uh, generally subdivide twenty-nine acres of the track into, uh, three industrial lots. At this point, uh, we were asked to do a, a quick review, um, the, um, as I understand it, based on the staff report that was written, the preliminary plat and site plan was approved in November with a total of five lots. At this point, they're trying to flat three of those lots. There is a timing issue associated with this plat as well, and I think, uh, that is looking that date up on the initial submittal. Yeah, in your letter, it is reflected to have been submitted on June second. Well, that's the date of the final plat, I think it has to do more with the date of the, of that submittal to the city.
It was, uh, submitted in that same timeframe, uh, we were provided an email, and again, my office doesn't have any, uh, review capacity, so I didn't follow these, uh, perhaps as much as I should have, knowing where we are today, um, but in that email, it was submitted at the same time as Sweetgrass Phase One A and One C, and comments were due back to Mr. Morris on June eighteenth. And again, from there, I don't know where they went, and Mr. Belichick, his name didn't get himself much later.
So that was essentially June seventh or eighth, the city received the application. In reviewing the, uh, submittal, as we received it, we didn't receive any other documents other than what you see, which is a final plat. So we don't have any final construction plans to review to, um, determine if adequate facilities are available to support this plat. So therefore, we would not recommend approval of the final plat at this point, now, there may have been plans that were done, and I don't know if that comment actually, uh, there have been other comments received from prior city engineering. So we have not looked at those yet. Okay, any additional comments you want to offer before I call on the applicant? No. Thank you, is the applicant present this evening?
Good evening, commissioners, Brandon Middleton with Kimley Horn, uh, eight zero one Cherry Street, uh, four seven six one zero two, um, city engineers, correct, we are seeking to final plat three of the five lots, preliminary plat was approved back in November of nineteen. As part of that preliminary plat approval, we went through a site plan review process also that included all utilities, drainage, uh, traffic, any deemed study that the city wanted to review, we submitted that, and it was approved at the same time by PNC and council towards the end of nineteen. Um, similar to other applicants, we submitted, um, prior to the June seventh, uh, submittal date, and received a letter from the city, um, stating that it was deemed complete on June ninth, and we were expecting to receive comments on June nineteenth. Uh, we reached out to Wes, um, again, we're sympathetic to staff turnover, um, he indicated us that, um, he didn't have any comments, and we likely would not receive any comments, and so, uh, it was a bit surprising, uh, towards the end of last week when we, when I got the voicemail from the city engineer asking for the plans, so, um, we submitted both hard copies and digital copies on that June seventh date. And I'm here to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and is there anyone wishing to speak for or against agenda item four E? Again, recognizing no one came forward to speak on, uh, behalf of agenda item four E, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion.
That is, that's the Parkway, uh, and back then, I don't even know, it had a name, it was a lot, it had that crazy name. But according to the developer or the engineer, so the plans, you're saying, the site plan, construction change, utility plans, have all been approved?
Site plan and preliminary plat were both approved in, uh, November of nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, and then we've submitted, uh, full civil landscape irrigation, um, along with full building permit, MEP, architectural, uh, structural, all at the same time.
What?
Uh, on that June seventh date.
And have, but they haven't been reviewed?
They have not been reviewed, no.
And, and in your assessment, is everything that was submitted consistent and compliant with what was identified in the preliminary plat?
It really is, yeah, this is a pretty simple project from a plating standpoint, three lots, they have public access on almost the entire perimeter. Um, all utilities are in Intermodal and Hassett Parkway, uh, so yeah, they're in almost exact compliance with the site plan and the preliminary plat, they're approved.
So if I remember this project, right, this, this was planned to be a warehouse, if I remember correct?
It's three total, um, currently it's speculative warehouse buildings, uh, approximately five hundred thousand square feet.
So I remember one of the things that I was very interested in was the screening elements that were going to go into this, so that it, so those residents in the Caraway project didn't, you know, drive right out of their neighborhood and feel like they were in an industrial complex, we talked about a lot of screening elements to help soften the look of that property, is, would you say you've included those appropriately?
We did, yeah, um, each building, the truckport faces inward, so of the three buildings, the two north buildings called A and B, truckport's on the south side, and then the larger building on the south, which is building C, that's facing north, so they're all kind of intercontained. Um, and then we're also doing heavy screening along, um, the view corridors of Intermodal, so, you know, you don't see down the truckport between the three buildings.
Yeah, I remember we were talking about maybe some screening walls or some outside, you know, kind of landscaping elements that might help soften that a little bit.
Yes, sir, and, and the, um, architectural plans show that, uh, exactly for, as a per.
But also along, I, I can't, or Passkey Drive.
I, I struggled with it also, yeah, Passkey, we should have asked.
Passkey, I don't know, I just said it the way I thought it.
You know, okay, yeah. I mean, screening along there, you know, from those lots that are south of Passkey Drive. So if you're going to be along that south property line along there, are you screening along there?
We have, um, shrubs and landscape screening, we're, we had to limit the amount of trees, but there's also a drainage that's going on the south side of that building. Um, but, um, the developer did take care of the facade on the south side of that larger building to, you know, to enhance that view corridor.
There were some relief elements into the basings on the building, if I remember correctly.
There were, yeah.
Those, you know, if you were asking me to remember stuff from two years ago, so.
That's impressive, yeah.
Do you know what the setback of the building is from Passkey?
Um, it's quite a bit, it's thirty to fifty feet, it's, it's pretty large, um, I don't remember exactly, but, um, you can zoom in on the plat, it, it has a dimension on one of the drainage, oh. Yeah, so it's thirty plus feet then. Yeah, so it's about fifty feet. I think the question was in regards to the setbacks from Passkey to the base of the building, and it's thirty plus feet, I think it's around fifty feet.
So just getting out of that drainage?
Correct.
Are there any requirements? Approval or comment or anything for any of those lot owners south of Passkey Drive? Because any way you look at it, I don't care what you do, but it's still a big warehouse, it's not a shop. Nothing?
Oh, yeah, I don't know if Caraway reflects it in their marketing drawings, but if somebody, anybody could have walked into the city offices and, and saw the, you know, the the approved zoning and seen that this was approved as industrial space.
And I think it helped during the public hearing, you know, stream realty to the developer, they do a ton of buildings across the metroplex, and I think it was clear based on the, the visuals we were providing that it's going to be a nice product, uh, and then we were trying to be sensitive to that residential adjacency.
Right. I will say it has more of an office look to the front.
Especially off of Hasslet Parkway, yeah.
Yeah, it does, you got, I remember where we started and what you guys landed on and agreed to, and it was a phenomenal improvement, I remember this very well. Any other questions for the applicant or city staff? Hey, if somebody would like to make a motion, and again, keep in mind that this item has, the, uh, the, the review period has lapsed on this as well. I opened, closed the public hearing, didn't I? Yeah, I did. If I missed it, please tell me I missed it, because that's important, but I, I believe I opened and closed the public hearing. All right, is there a motion? I'll make a motion, I make a motion, we recommend approval to city council of the final plats of lots one to three, block one of Hassett Crossing addition being twenty-nine acres out of the Elder, Eldridge Hopkins survey abstract number six forty-six, with one change to the plat document to reflect the correct name, uh, for the road that's currently shown to be Abendel Hasslet Road. Okay, the motion been made, it's been seconded, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, agenda item four F was pulled from, uh, review this evening, so we do not need to take any action on that, or, or have any discussion on it. Uh, we will likely see that come back at a future, uh, meeting, maybe even August. We did not go into executive session, so we don't need to take any action on executive session, that takes care of agenda items five and six. And status of current development projects, I don't believe we had a staff report showing current projects, but, uh, we can talk about whether that is something we want to uh, hold off on for a period of time until we get, uh, some, some direction on who's going to be doing reviews and giving updates and things like that, so, um, you know, this was something that I think Mr. Reeves put in place for us to help, um, reduce the amount of conversation about current projects or, or that had been approved, is that something that's still easy to maintain, or are we, are we challenged at this time to be able to do that?
Uh, it may be challenging, but there's no reason we can't look at it and try to continue, because again, I thought that was the great benefit to the commission.
So let's keep it on the agenda for our next meeting, and we can talk about whether that process was difficult, or, or if it still makes sense to do that. And then it takes us to agenda item eight, which is future agenda items, do, is our pipeline pretty full, we've got a lot of things going on for our August meeting? That one I cannot answer. All right, well, you're in the hot seat tonight, Mr. Chavers, but thank you for being there for us. Yeah, we, we'll find out, all right. And is anybody aware of any reason that we need to talk about any calendar or meeting, upcoming meeting date changes? Okay. We are adjourned, the time is nine seventeen PM.
This conference is no longer being recorded.